Car. Behind Starbucks.
Oh, very good. So it's a recent.
Which started me thinking about the historic sheds. Cause there's a really nice one back there that's.
A little one in the corner. That one's not too shabby either. Do you back there?
Okay, it's five thirty. Everybody's here, I think. It's coming. Yeah.
Susan will be online.
She is.
Alright, so we'll call the meeting of November the twenty first. The town of Breckenridge Town Council took order. Uh, can we get a roll call?
Mr. Gerard.
Here.
Mr. Fletcher.
Here.
Mr. Giller. Mr. Lee's.
Here.
Ms. Proper.
I think he's muted.
Hey, I'll come back to her in a second. Uh, Mr. Guerra.
Here.
Ms. Gort.
Here. She's.
Ms. Proper.
Here. Thanks.
Okay, do we have any changes to the minutes? Alright, then we'll say that they are approved. Staff, are there any changes to this short agenda that we have today?
There are not.
Okay. Then I guess, um, as part of the certified local government, we were asked to take public comment on historic preservation issues in the community. With that, I'll open it up to any public comment. And if you're attending the meeting by phone, press star nine on the phone and then star six to unmute yourself. Doesn't look like anybody's here to make comments. We don't have a consent count calendar, so we'll skip over that section, session. And we have no public hearing, correct?
Correct.
Alright. So, jump right into the work session.
Alright, so for the work session on historic sheds in a past planning commission meeting, Janet subtly brought up with the commission the issue of various sheds around the historic district not being maintained and, um, some in danger of collapse. We followed this up by mapping all of our historic sheds and secondary structures in our historic district, where we found a total of one hundred and one. Um, with fifty-nine of those considered by staff as well maintained, twenty-eight maintained, twelve poorly maintained, and two not maintained. Um, which I will show that map to you in just a minute. Um, so staff and Breck history have been discussing working with the property owners um, of the sheds that are either poorly maintained or not maintained. Um, this could include technical assistance or potentially a grant um, to stabilize the sheds. And we intend to discuss the possibility of a grant further with town council during a work session in the future. Um, we are also supportive of outside nonprofit, um, assistance. And then we will work, the staff will work closely with Breck history throughout the process. Um, staff is also researching our current code on stabilizing historic structures. Um, currently, that's only on landmarked properties, and so we'll be looking into potentially expanding that to all historic properties, including sheds. Um, moving to the map that was linked at the bottom of the memo. Um, you can see it opens up to this, which we have currently a lot of historic structures, and if you open up the legend, you can see that the green shows the well-maintained properties. Yellow shows maintained, orange is poorly maintained, and red is not maintained. And then the blue diamond shows properties where the primary residence was locally landmarked. And in some cases, these secondary structures were also locally landmarked, and it's noted in the condition description. So if you were to click on one of these dots, it pulls up information about it, so you can see the property address, the type of structure, the condition, a condition description if applicable. And then you can also view the architectural inventory form for the property just by clicking on it, and it'll pull that up for you. Um, and then the property status. So this one is locally landmarked, and you can see photos of the structure in its current condition. Um, so looking at our two structures that are in the worst condition, they are both off of High Street. Um, we have this barn that was brought up during the initial meeting, and as you can see, it's falling in on the back. And then is held up by, um, wooden planks on the front, which if you click on these, you can expand the image to see it better. And then our other shed that is not doing well is this one over here. And you can see here that the roof line is kind of starting to sag, and the roofing material is coming off. So our questions for the commission is, are there other options if the commission suggests staff further evaluate? And does the commission have any additional comments?
I have a question. Are they allowed to use the shed? Are they limited as to what they can use the sheds for? Can they sell like cookies out of the back of them, or like, can it be a separate business? Maybe that's outside the scope of your research, but.
A little bit. It kind of depends on the zoning, because I mean, Dynamite Cookies is a historic shed. Yeah, so Dynamite Cookies is a historic shed, um, I believe. And they are operating a commercial business out of that. Um, there are some that are, I believe, like a secondary residence or an office space. And then there are others that are really small, so they're just like storage areas.
Note on these what they were used for, or?
Um, not particularly. I didn't note on them. I mainly noted if they were connected to the main residence, or if there were, um, like other things that were mentioned about the property that were of importance, or just the condition.
Anybody else have questions? I've got lots.
Did you look into what? Oh, wait, Susan's got a question.
Yeah, I wasn't, uh, clear on what the distinction between well-maintained and maintained was.
Um, so well-maintained were, um, sheds that looked to be in like really good condition, so potentially like recently restored. Um, and then maintained, um, were sheds that were in pretty good condition, but like not given potentially like the maximum amount of care that they could. Which this was, um, based on staff reviewing these structures, so it's not. I can't guarantee it's fully accurate, but kind of to the best of our ability.
A chair can call for public comment. I would probably make sure that we kind of follow our public hearing process, so planning commission questions first, then.
We'll call on you after there, everybody's done here.
Okay, I've, um, my next question is how do you know that they're historic and they're not just a shed that was built like?
So, um, some of it was looking at these sheds, so I took pictures of all of the sheds that I thought were historic. And then I went back through and tried to find all of the, um, architectural inventory forms, which are kind of like historic um, thing for the house, and would check and see whether or not the sheds were also marked historic, which some of them mentioned the shed, but didn't really clarify whether or not it was historic, so I left it in here. And, um, Larissa's potentially going to help me with, um, just double checking this to make sure that we don't have sheds that are not historic on here. Um, that will be removed. Um, but yeah.
So Ellie, um, a shed is a shed, uh, and not a garage if it doesn't house an automobile? Is that the distinction that the town draws?
So primarily, if it's historic, it was built as a shed because, or a barn. Because there wasn't like a car garage. So, um, they might have been converted into a garage in historic preservation reuse. Um, but I would just say a second, I would, we could also call it a secondary structure.
Yeah.
Instead of shed.
You're also, your garage, it could be a shed, it's pretty much the same.
Yeah, I mean, it could be a bar, like a historic barn or shed, I'd say.
Were there a few outhouses?
Yeah. So the kind of four main categories that I mapped were barns, cabins, sheds, and outhouses was kind of the categories that I put them in. And this, for example, is a building that, um, is a barn, but it was converted into a garage.
And then did you look at the sandborne maps?
Um, I did not compare these properties to the sandborne maps, but I could go back and do that.
What would be interesting about those is so many of these have been moved through the years that it may be on the sandboard map in the original location versus the current location. But it's another resource.
Mm-hmm. There was like several properties that I ran into where they were like, this shed was moved and didn't say from where. So it was kind of interesting learning where the sheds had been and where they'd ended up.
Have you looked into what other historic towns have done with sheds? As far as um, regulations or?
We haven't looked into sheds specifically. I've started doing some preliminary research on, um, demolition by neglect code for other um, cities and towns, um, but I haven't seen anything specific to historic sheds.
Susan's got a decision.
Um, suppose the town, um, decides to provide grants for the maintenance of these sheds. Um, do we have any, or does the town have any authority to, um, require people to, um, keep these up? I mean, I, I do feel that they are an important part of the character of Breckenridge. Um, and I'd like to see them maintained. Um, but obviously, there's quite a bit of variation in, uh, whether people seem to, uh, want to keep them in good shape and, uh, not.
Um, so we currently don't have any requirements, because we, uh, like when a property comes in to be locally landmarked, they would have to stabilize their secondary structures and historic sheds. Um, but that's why we're looking into our current code, like regarding stabilization of historic structures, which is the closest we have to like a demolition by neglect code. And potentially expanding that to include our historic sheds, um, would allow us to um, have the property owners maintain a level of um.
So that first step would be to landmark any properties that are not landmarked and have these sheds. Is that, is that what you're saying?
Or we could change the code.
Yeah.
Change the code to?
To require to not allow for demolition by neglect specifically.
Of any historic structure.
Correct. There's some ties in our code that in some could potentially be interpreted more for primary structures that they can't reduce in, um, qualific- qualifying uh, levels. So if it's like a contributing structure, it can't move to a non-contributing structure, for example. Um, but we usually catch that in development, um, when they come in for a permit. Um, so that, the demo by neglect, if we went that route, we're trying, we're, we're just looking into it at this point um, to see if that's something that would work here, um, and that's needed. So that would be a code change, so it wouldn't require the land marking. The land marking is helpful to property owners, um, in order to get, um, be eligible for grant money from the state and tax benefits. So that's tax credit, so that's one reason to landmark a building. Um, it's great for the town because we preserve it, and then it catches it under our code for that.
So I guess what I'm asking you is, but I hear you're saying we could either landmark or change the code or both. And I'm looking for the, the pros and cons of each.
Yeah, well, landmarking is completely voluntary.
Okay.
I guess is the short answer. The code would be required if we were to do, go down that route.
So when you say demolition by neglect, is there an implied, um, situation there where there's incentive for a property owner to allow the shed to demolish, so he doesn't have to come in to get a permit to demo it? Or is it usually just that people just don't want to spend the money to keep it up? What, what is?
I mean, could be a multitude of reasons. They could want to let it go so they don't have to maintain it. They, I mean, yeah, exactly what you said, and probably some more reasons too. So we're, we're not ready to talk about a demo by neglect ordinance at all right now. Um, we have not done enough research into that. Um, so we just really wanted to come back in response to kind of Janet's concerns with this, um, historic shed mapping project and, um, kind of go edit, go about this with the, a potential grant program um, for restoration. So that's, and it, we may follow with something else, but at this time, that's what we're looking at here.
So, um, let's just say one of these two, uh, not maintained ones on Harris Street collapses. Um, do they have to get a permit? Do the owners have to get a permit to take that wood away, to take the materials away? Can they then just get a dumpster and throw it out and that's it, it's gone?
I don't know that I can answer that question right now.
Can they, but can anyone just remove it? They, can they remove any of these sheds if they want to? Uh, if they're not landmarked?
Well, if, I don't think so. I don't think they can.
Yeah.
They may not. They can.
What criteria did you use to distinguish or say that it was historic? Like, is there a certain year or?
Um, so historic would be sheds within our, um, historic time period of it's before nineteen forty-two. Um, uh, so that is what the architectural inventory survey, so these used to define historic houses and buildings, and also what I used, um, when looking at these, which it's, there's not good record keeping on when these sheds and secondary structures were built for the most part. Um, so it was just kind of looking at the, them and the building materials and kind of reading through the architectural inventory surveys to try to figure that out.
But I think Mike's, Mike's point is good, that we could also cross-reference the sandborne maps too. See if, see if they're on there.
Yeah.
Uh, Breck History has, um, photo archives that we can look into too. That they're going to cross-check this with.
What are the sandmore maps?
Um, it's historic maps, um, that they used for insurance, for, for like fire insurance. Um. Yeah.
They're historic survey, land surveys of buildings, property.
I'm gathering that we've made no effort at this point to reach out to any of the owners of these buildings.
No, not yet.
Did you encounter owners during your survey and have any conversations while, while you're walking around on there?
Um, I only had a conversation with one person who asked, um, kind of what I was doing, and I said I was mapping them. Um, and he seemed kind of interested, but, um, was fine with it, and like his shed was in good condition, so it wasn't a big deal. But yeah.
Well, just for the sake of discussion, it seems to me that one of the first things we could do is reach out to people, especially the ones whose sheds are in bad shape, and at least find out who they are. Do they care?
Mm-hmm.
Maybe they're not even thinking about this. And once we have our inventory, plus mapping out some of these owners to see who they might be, then we can get a sense of whether people care or not.
Yeah.
And whether we need a carrot or a stick to, to work with them. If they're absentee owners or they're aware. Yeah.
Yeah, which it was good to learn that most of our sheds are well-maintained, so most people are taking good care of their sheds.
When Janet brought this up, one of my immediate comment was about the little shed ha- which I think has been a residence behind Starbucks downtown. And that's a, that's something that a lot of people see, walking through that alley and go to Starbucks and there is certainly a, a reason for that being preserved and improved. I mean, some of these are, when you look at the map, some of them are way out, people aren't gonna
Yeah.
gonna see them. Um, I think there's even a shed in the Highlands that I'm aware of that is within the period. And it's certainly falling down by neglect. Where is that? Up, um, it's in Highlands Park, and it's, I can't remember the name of the street. It's the street that splits off to Discovery Hill. So you're going up to Discovery Hill, and there's a split, and a little pocket park, we've kind of maintained there. It's the lower street, and it's clear back on the backside. Thanks.
There's also that Historic Museum on Main Street.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, and that's locally owned by somebody who probably should be doing a better job taking care of it.
Yeah. Definitely could use some love. Prime land just sitting there.
Hmm.
Yeah.
Are we gonna do a normal, like, I have some suggestions, but not questions, so are you gonna save those for later?
Do that. You want to start that, Ellen?
Well, we also have a, I don't, I, I don't know, I have, I have comments, but not, um, not questions. I don't know when you want those.
Well, let's, let's hear, if everybody's done with their questions, let's hear from the public. That would be you.
Mm-hmm.
Cool.
Go ahead.
Uh, for those of you that don't know me, Lee Edwards, I have a design build firm here in town. Um, a lot of the structures you're talking about, I've touched over the decades, but I do have one general question before you put your comments. Excuse me, I should have had some water before I came. Um, you were saying something about density? I think. Would there still be free density?
Historic structures are not counted towards a property's density.
Good, so the sheds.
Oh, sorry.
It's, when they're restored, if you put the foundation on and you build a basement, that is still free density and would be under the sheds still as well.
Basement free.
Yeah.
Footprint of the building itself counts against.
Right.
Okay. Question number one. Thank you.
An amendment. Under the current code, you, there's like, it's four hundred or five hundred square feet of like a bonus allowance. So if you have a historic shed, four hundred or five hundred square feet, I can't, I'm not sure this specific is not counted towards the total density above ground currently. I, and that may be different if it were restored and a foundation put under it, but.
Thank you. Um, you asked the question if the owners have been contacted about the red sheds, not yet. Probably be a good idea to let them know. I know one of them's aware of it. Uh, let's see, Larissa, you're out there, that's great. So you're hearing the conversation. The goal is obviously to restore and keep all the sheds. Now, a lot of these outbuildings are located in not prime locations if someone were to add on to the historic property that they're on. What happens if you want to move them a little bit? Is that still an option, being a secondary and not the primary residence? That might help the sheds rehabilitation. Uh.
I think we, we had a project a couple of years ago that we allowed them to move.
Yeah, you can move it with, um, negative points.
Move with negative points. Alright, next question. And this is one probably more for the town council, but working on any of these buildings, you're looking at stabilization, excavation, foundation, framing, roof, windows, and doors, just to get the exterior weather tight, not talking about electrical or anything else on the inside. What kind of financial numbers might the town be putting out there?
And we, at this point, we don't have any details. We really just wanted to respond to Janet and identify the sheds that are in poor condition. And so we had this mapping exercise, which is what we're presenting tonight. We have brainstormed the potential of a grant program, but we have no scope of what that is yet, so, um, that would be more to come.
Good. So I think it's a very positive first step. Thank you.
Thanks. Um, we, Mark, we may want to see if Larissa'd like to say anything. Larissa'd like to say anything?
I, I'm here. I'm, don't know if, um, everyone's hearing me. But, um, thank you for allowing me to join and, um, take a moment. I think from the perspective of Breckenridge history, we are, um, just happy to help in any way that we can with this project. I think these secondary structures, um, even though they're not primary in nature, they're, they still very much contribute to the town, the town's historic character. They're part of the town's story, and so I'm, we would support, you know, creative ways to help homeowners to protect them from, um, going away. So that is where we are, and we're happy to support in any way that we can.
Any other commissioners have comments?
Comments? Yeah, I have a few comments. Uh, well, I just think, I mean, this is more just suggestion. A lot of this now, I think, I, I realize we're, this will get raised up with town council. So, uh, you know, my thought is if, if this is important to the town, then the town council needs to get behind it. Um, you know, and my thoughts are, in my, I just did some brainstorming, and maybe they come up with a campaign, save our sheds. Uh, and put some, uh, part of that might be for those that are in poor or not maintained condition, figure out what is the cost to stabilize them? And maybe the town funds that piece, um, for stabilization, uh, you know, you know, we don't know if we're talking a few hundred thousand for all of them, millions, but that's, that would be a start. And then I thought, well, why not have a competition? And, uh, out of those that are identified as poor or not maintained, um, what's in the most interesting use for reuse for one of the sheds? And the, and, uh, and get the town, uh, residents to vote on it. And then the, the town council will fund the development of that, but that, what that would do for the other owners, maybe if they put in an application, and they don't get the town to pay for it, they might say, well, this would be a good idea anyway, and I'll do it, I'll, I'll pay for it myself. So it's just, overall, this building, some awareness uh, might be a good idea. Actually, I came up with some ideas, you know, because we've seen, you know, they're used as garbage sheds. We saw one that was hot tubs, I think. You know, they're used as garbage sheds. We saw one that was hot tubs. I think, you know, if I had one, I'd make it a cigar lounge. You know, if you could make it an ADU, you can make it a greenhouse, you know, but I think, uh. Um, it might, that might just help with the awareness and a lot of owners might say, hey, I could do that with my shed too. So that's my suggestion.
I think this is a great. I think it's important and definitely wanna learn more about it and work. Work with you all to figure out how we can make our sheds more loved in our town and used. It's really expensive real estate. And most of these houses are worth so much and then they're. Have a shed behind it that's falling apart. It's really kinda sad. About like a, a coffee book table or anyone good at photography, you know, like sheds and. Sheds at Breckenridge, something like that.
If you fix it up, you can be in the book.
Yeah.
Well, my thought is that this is an important project. I think. Once you become aware of this aspect of the historical properties. You can't not want to save them. I think there's a whole lot of things, you know, Alan, save our sheds, that's great. How about adopt a shed? I mean, the town council can do all kinds of little things, which makes it more attractive. To save these by, uh, waiving density issues, waving negative points. Maybe there's funding available. It just requires some creative thinking to come up with. Ways to make this work if the council wants to step into that, but I think the public would, uh, would be behind it. Just to keep that part of our, our history. We all see them. They're all there. And whether they register or not at that point in time, but I think it would be in, very important. If you read some of the listservs that come from APA and CPI. Demolition by neglect is a big deal around the country. And even with historic areas that aren't as old as ours. Uh, people are more interested in letting their property be demolished by neglect. So that they can replace it with something new, uh, and use the valuable space. Uh, which may be what's happening with the museum on Main Street. Uh, I don't wanna spend the money to make this nice again. Maybe I'll just wait till it falls down. I don't know. I think, I think we should be looking seriously at strengthening, strengthening our demolition by neglect. Code. And I think that's happening around the country. Su- Susan, did you have some comments?
Um, no, I think I've said what I have.
No further comments, no.
Okay, you know, I can't not comment on this.
Um, first, uh, Ellie, thank you very much. Uh, nice work. Uh, with respect to number one, um, I've seen jurisdictions streamline the, the accessory dwelling unit. Um, process by offering standard designs that could, and materials that could readily be approved. Uh, I encourage you to consider, uh, preservation, job one is a, a sound roof. And so I would consider, urge you to consider what roofs we would readily accept to give the homeowners guidance. What, um, perhaps foundation work we would readily accept. Think about maybe a kit of parts that would, um, streamline or facilitate the rehab of these. Um, in a, in a way or means that is, um, historically acceptable. So then the second one, um, Janet is absolutely correct, as was Lee. Um, these historic outbuildings are an important part of the town's cultural landscape. The outbuildings are character defining features to the historic district. The historic preservation community world, uh, nationally has raised awareness of the importance of the parts and pieces of a district. It's really the context. And just as Larissa said, um, these outbuildings tell the story of how people lived in early Breckenridge. So, uh, two thumbs up and thank you.
Yeah.
Um, I too applaud this effort to make everybody aware of the situation. We have a tendency to kind of look the other way when we see some of this. And it, if it doesn't affect us directly, we, uh, don't really get, uh, too excited about it. But the, you know, obviously the big issue here is, is, uh, financial. And people have to spend money to stabilize things and keep things, um, in, in place. But I think that as everybody said. These things are important. They're part of the history of Breckenridge and as Mike points out, it, it illustrates how people actually lived. Hundred years ago here in Breckenridge. That's all I have.
I think those are all great comments and suggestions and thank you.
Can, that's a, one more thing. I think Ellie, uh, it's just, I, I was blown away by the map and everything. I think it's incredible. Um, it'd be interesting to know if, if the, uh, what might be helpful to persuade a, a landowner is. Is the shed being used for something?
Okay.
I mean, if they're actually using it for storage or using it for garbage, let's say in the commercial area or, or something, or as a garage. You know, that, then you could say, well, you have to, there's a certain code you have to have for something that you're using. If it's just sitting there empty and. You know, the landowner, the property owner's had the place for forty years, that's a little bit harder to get them, persuade them to fix it. But if it's being used, you know, you gotta, you gotta maintain what you're, you know, you're, what you're using.
True. Which I think most of the structures that had a secondary use, like besides storage. Or just sitting empty were pretty well maintained.
Yeah. Yeah.
Julia, is there anything else?
I don't think we have, uh, I guess I'd just say that, um, we are planning to take this to the town council. Cause they asked for an update on this, um, looking into this, and we're gonna go to them in January. Um, and in the meantime, we'll be looking into kind of, you know, what does demo by neglect potentially mean for us? It, it is a bit of a political decision. Um, and so we'll be talking more about that. And if we go down that route, obviously you all, we will be back here talking to you about that. So, uh, more on that in January.
Do you have a final comment?
Yep, forgot to stand up, didn't I? Possibly a financial incentive could be a loan program of some sort to get some of the immediate needs taken care of. Thank you.
Yeah, our, there's what, two ones that are, we consider in, in danger right now. Um, so we'll, we'll probably try to push forward something on those, with those two owners if possible. If we are able to offer some financial incentive or something, or loan program. Um, and I, I think it'd be great if Breck history, you know, they're willing to, um, administer that grant program for us. Um, so we will. Thanks, Larissa.
Thank you.
I'm gonna adjourn the meeting at, uh.
On a council update? I'll go fa- I'll go as fast as I can. Um, alright, so the town council update. Um. Let's see. We had, um, the Breck, uh, Breckenridge Grand Vacations divested development agreement. That they entered into. Oh, was it a year ago? I, I'm not upon the Breckenridge Grand Vacation stuff. Do you wanna do that part?
Sure.
Thanks.
Um, so they, the council, I think, approved extending their, um. It's the application is on hold for their previous permit for another six months. And I think that was the vesting for. Um, that former application, so they can continue with negotiations on this potential new development agreement. Um, they discussed a few different parcels at the last meeting. Um, the South Gold Rush lot, which they're referring to as parcel three, which, um. Will have duplex units on it. There was some issues previously in the design with encroachments, the wetlands there. And I think council seemed to be satisfied with the new proposal there that, um, doesn't encroach into the wetlands as much. Um, and it's only in a small area that would have encroachment. Um, it is a piece of wetlands that previously was created when the gondola was installed. Um, so the idea from, um, experts is that this area of wetlands actually, um, mitigating that. Would improve other wetlands from being dewatered. So, um, the council was generally okay with that approach in the new design. And, um, the agreement was, uh, two to one mitigation for any wetlands that are disturbed. Under that new design. Let's see. So that was parcel three. Um, on Peak Eight, um, the, uh, current ski area admin site. The former Peak Eight Hotel site, um, they reduced the number of proposed parking spaces down to two hundred and three. Um, it sounds like BGV has a private negotiation with the ski area to reduce the number of parking spaces that they're gonna require for that. So they were able to get that number way down. And, um, there, the council agreed that there could be a modification to the master plan on Peak Eight. Um, this would reduce the footprint over all of the building and increase setbacks. But it would, um, potentially change the requirement for the building to step down on one side. But, um, there's been, a- and the council was generally agreeable to that. And then the, I think the biggest changes were on parcel six, which is the potential new single family subdivision. Um, which would be south of Temper Trail. This, um, was reduced the proposal from twenty, uh, single family home lots. Down to fourteen and increased the lot size average from point three acres to point six. There's still a recommended, um, home size limitation of seventy-five hundred square feet. And the council agreed that, um, water service fees for this, um, neighborhood likely in the agreement will be one point two five times. Current service fees. So just some, um, pretty, uh, detailed things that they're working out in those. Um, on the different parcels, but more to come with BGV in the, uh, the twenty-eighth is the next meeting.
Thanks so much, Sarah. Does anyone have questions for Sarah on that before I go on? Okay. Um, we had. Um, the engineering admin rules and regs, which were updated. And, um, Shannon Smith took that forward and what that is regarding is actually conforming to our, our streetlights. To our dark sky standards and, um, you know, other, other lights that the town uses. So, uh, we are looking at, just, we put that in place. We had to have that in place in order to apply for the, for dark sky certification. And, um, the town has to comply, uh, once certified, which takes about a year if we get certified. Um, five years, um, from the date of approval for community certification. So we are gonna be slowly changing out our lights, um, and they're gonna be on motion. They're, they need to be on motion sensors. They have to be a certain temperature. Um, and yeah, we'll be working toward that over the next probably six years or so.
I have just commented, I was just in Sedona and they're, they're, I think they're one of the communities that are already dark sky compliant. You can't even tell if there's a gas station coming up. I mean, I, I kept driving by the entrances for a gas station for Whole Foods. You, there, there's no lighting at all. You just, uh, you don't even know anything is there. They really took it to the extreme. And they don't have a lot of lights in their downtown strip at night, like, like we do.
Interesting, yeah, um. See, I mean, our, on our private property, so we did take the exterior lighting policy update. To the council as well, which the planning commissioner saw, um, at your last meeting, I believe. And there was a couple of, uh, of things that the council changed on that, a recommendation. Um, they primarily went, approved most of it. Um, ones that they did not approve, um, the planning commission recommended was, um. I think there was a residential holiday lighting residential cutoff of February first. And then a commercial of April first, and they went with just April first, because that would be easier to. Um, manage and administer. And then there was a proposal for residential lighting zone three to be turned off at eleven P M. All lights and, um, proposed motion sensors, and they did not support that either. Um. We, I'm trying to think if there was any other major change. I, I don't think so. Um, we are gonna be returning on the twenty-eighth to council to talk more about decorative lights. Cause there was a desire for more information. So we are bringing back a fairly detailed work session memo. On decorative lights. So, um, more on that. And. That's sort of where we're at. And then we, the other one that they didn't address at the previous work session was. The restriction of number of residential lights outside. So we'll ask that question at the, the upcoming one on the twenty-eighth.
The number of, like, sconces or.
Yeah.
Decorated trees or what are we talking?
The number of permanent exterior lighting. Yeah, so I think what we, the planning commission suggested limiting it. And so we talked about, um, two fixtures per building and, per building entrance. Plus six fixtures on top of that. And I guess you could, in theory, just put one light at your entrance and put the other one somewhere else. Cause we're just gonna total up the property. So I guess if you wanted the soffit, more soffit lights under your overhang, you could.
Well, I would be more restrictive than that. Maybe two for an entry and one for secondaries, but I'm anti-light.
That wouldn't include path lighting or landscape light. Or path, path lighting.
As the exterior home light. Yeah. That's where we are with that.
Thank you.
Um, and then we had, um. Uh, Himmelstein annexation request, which is south of the property that he owns. That is south of seven eleven and up against the French Creek Trail. So kind of that little triangle that. Um, like C dot has used it in the past, for example. And, um, he is requesting for annexation, providing two, um. Affordable housing units potentially. And so that, um. Was just a work session to see if the council was interested in pursuing anything or further discussions, and they were. Um, although he asked for, uh, quite a few. Like waivers from the code and they didn't really support the waivers. So we'll see what comes back, um, with that.
Is that not a big concession for only two housing units?
Is what a big concession?
In the opinion of the staff is what Himmelstein is asking for. Is that not a big concession? The annexation in exchange for just two?
Um, I mean. It's, it's a difficult site, um, to provide housing on with access to the highway. Um, so. You know, staff wanted to, to ask the question because it's not like a. Like a no brainer site for housing.
Not an obvious site for, for housing. Really for anything else.
The difficulty.
They have is right, right there.
It is definitely a difficult.
They've got, they've got the river or the, is that the creek?
The river on the, yeah, I'm part of it. Mm-hmm. Yeah, and then kind of that steep face on the south.
Desirable, you got munchies out your back door.
Could you access it from?
Could you access it from? Is with that, what's that, and with a bridge?
Yeah, with a bridge, yeah.
I think that was discussed at one point early on, um, and we do not have an easement for that trail. So that is another, uh. That was one thing that the town would get out of it, as well as housing units would be the actual trail.
Get into who, who's gonna maintain that bridge and.
I just always try to think of a way not to.
They have looked at it and I can't remember the discussions or what happened, why it wasn't, didn't go forward, but. Um. So we'll probably hear more about that, um, I'm gonna guess you will be back with a proposal. Um, the one fourteen South Main Street redevelopment decision, um, was approved. So that project is approved. And that was it.
So they approved what we already approved without any changes?
I didn't have a chance to listen to that, what was the discussion, were there any?
Um, the, the council had questions about, um, the building width. And, um, the employee mitigation, um, calculations, and then, um. Some of the points for under thirty-three are like the EV chargers. Um, but, um, after, you know, thorough presentation and answering a lot of their questions, they were. Okay with, um, passing it as approved. Um, I think it made more sense to them once it was clear that. Um, the design is more theoretical on the interior, like the way the bar was laid out in some of the. Um, the spacing for retail versus, um, food and beverage, maybe wouldn't make sense. As shown, if you had an actual bar, you'd have patrons in your retail shop or something. Um, but once it was clear that, um, this is like a theoretical space, um, core and shell is how it's referred to. For a lot of, um, like future development, so they would build a building and then have a tenant come on after and. Make the space for the tenant, so if that happens in the future and the tenant wants something different. Um, they, then we would recalculate the employee mitigation that's required if they change the floor plan.
The town would have a clawback then.
Exactly, and that's in the development permit that they were granted.
Was there much discussion of the rooftop?
Um, no, that wasn't one of their concerns, um, and I think the design, the way it's so inset and sunken. On this one, um, was less of a, a concern from seeing patrons from the street or anything like that.
That's it? Okay, nobody, nobody else says anything, I'm gonna adjourn the meeting at, uh, six twenty-four.
Everyone have a great holiday.
You too.
Yeah.
You too.
Thank you for a great meeting.
I know.